... Amazing, but they said they were five minutes. I don't get it. It seems like a check. I don't know. I have a terrible home, so I'm not gonna be able to make it. Oh, no. Anyway, we've got another two. I don't have to stand in this. In order to do it, it really feels like too much pressure. Government. Yeah. No kidding. Right there with you. That's what I had to change my statement like that. Okay. Everybody go on, sir. I call cases nineteen dash zero three seven eight, proceeding on motion of admission as to the rates and charges, rules and regulations of New York State Electric and Gas Corporation for electric service. Nineteen dash eight dash zero three seven nine, proceeding on motion of admission as to the rates and charges, rules and regulations of New York State Electric and Gas Corporation for gas service. Nineteen eight dash zero three eight zero, proceeding on motion of admission as to the rates and charges, rules and regulations of Rochester Gas and Electric Corporation for electric service. And nineteen dash eight dash zero three eight one, proceeding on motion of admission as to the rates and charges, rules and regulations of Rochester Gas and Electric Corporation for gas service. As I stated during the information forum, my name is James Costello. I am one of two administrative law judges that is assigned to these proceedings. Also with me today is Commissioner John Howard. Commissioner Howard is one of the public service commissioners. We're all welcome inside, welcome to these rates and conditions and services and service should be. Commissioner Howard, like your address, please.
Thank you. Just one of the things, always a pleasure to be in Bennington and Grum County, Southern County. The area visited many, many times. I am now three weeks on the job as Commissioner for Public Public Service. However, I had roughly forty years of public service prior to this employment. And one thing, these important statements will personally and professionally about tonight's proceeding. When I first came to Albany, there were forty years ago, my first assignment was to develop testimony for one of these proceedings, or then member of the state legislature. While this group often will not have the broad level of technical expertise or force power behind it that the other parties will, the company, the department staff, and other large parties, your opinions tonight count very much to me personally and the other members of the commission that your opinions and your desires and your reactions to this case are, will be an essential part of the record. That's why we take the great effort to transcribe these, all of your records. You will see them within a few weeks in the transcript data. So again, this is an important part of the proceeding. And I look forward to hearing everyone's comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. So we are here today to listen to your comments, which we will summarize and report to the Public Service Commission for purposes of this public statement here. If you haven't done so already, I'd ask that you fill out a card at your expense. Cards are available at the desk over there. What I'm gonna do is use the speaker cards generally. Water that I receive come with one exception for one member of the Onion Town Council, who I'm going to speak first. When I call out your name, please come to the podium. Use the microphone, speak loudly, clearly, so that the court order can find out what you're saying. As Commissioner stated, this has been transcribed, because the transcripts generally will be available within a week to two weeks from today's date. If you have any cell phones or electronic devices that are on, as we're silenced at this time, if you have any questions, I'm actually answering them at this time about the process. And if not, we're gonna start with our first speaker. And that speaker is Patricia Jacob.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I'm on behalf of the Onion Town Council, and I'd like to speak on behalf of myself and several groups of institutions. The first group, the elderly disabled, those on fixed income, single parents, as well as those families who are both parents or employed, all living on paycheck to paycheck. This ill-advised rate hike will be a great hardship, causing some to choose between food and fuel in our area. In 2016, NISIC was permitted to collect tens of millions of dollars to replace twenty-five miles of the Duroy pipeline. This money was never spent on said project. Our tax-paying citizens should not have to suffer financial hardship so that a for-profit corporation may benefit financially again. The second group, our young adults, our children and grandchildren, deserve the cleaner environment that non-pipeline alternatives that specifically reduce gas consumption will bring. This proposed pipeline project flies in the face of the Climate Leadership and Community Protection Act, recently signed by Governor Holmes. Aggressive renewable mandates in the CLCPA require that our electric grid employ more solar and wind farms. Money would be far better spent by NISIC improving the electric grid, subsidies for home insulation, and local upgrades. This project makes no sense when we should be updating the grid to be the grid of the future. Interruptable customers have required an alternative source of fuel for four days per year. This hardly justifies a 125% increase in gas capacity to our area. It is wrong for our residents and it's wrong for our planet to allow this massive build-out of fossil fuel infrastructure. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Maureen Bellak.
Good evening, Commissioner Howard, Administrator Law Justin Costello, to this company, to the elected officials, to all the advocates and community members here tonight. My name is Maureen Bellak. I'm the Litigation and Policy Counsel of the Public Utility Law Project. We go by the acronym PULP. And we are a forty-year-old nonprofit organization that specializes in advocating on behalf of New York State's low and fixed-income utility customers. We operate a hotline where we help people on a monthly basis who have faced some shut-offs and work with utility companies' equipment to pay them agreements to prevent them from losing service. We also enter as parties to manage the state's policy proceedings through the Public Service Commission. We are full parties here in the NISIC and RGE rate cases, and we will be filing a revener testimony as well as rebuttal. We want to start by thanking you for holding a hearing in Bennington, which is such an important part of the NISIC territory. We also appreciate having the hearing so early in the rate case process. It will help inform our testimony as well as the many other parties that we see in the room with us here tonight, so thank you. PULP wanted to touch base about three specific issues that we see with the rate case, and that we will be diving into deeper with our testimony. The first is the affordability aspect of the case. As the company mentioned earlier, NISIC alone, without even considering RGE, covers 40% of upstate New York, as a massive part of the upstate territory. In May 2019, NISIC and RGE filed a rate case asking for approximately $195 million in year one. Last week, the company submitted their updates and asked for increases in each of the other companies except for RGE gas. NISIC is now seeking a 22.7% increase in electric delivery rates and a 4.5% gas delivery increase. And what does that mean for customers in NISIC territory? That's approximately $11.33 more per month for the average electric customer and $1.71 more for an average gas customer in the territory. And while the companies do say that their rates are lower than a lot of the other utility customers or companies in the state, the problem is that a lot of NISIC and RGE customers are already struggling with payables. PULP has looked at financial statistics from the New York State Community Association's public report and the Henry Wades Alto Report that we wanted them into the record here tonight. In Brum County, seventeen percent of our residents are living in poverty. Seven point five percent of our seniors age sixty-five or more are living in poverty. And roughly forty-five percent of the female-headed family households with children present are living in poverty. Sixty-two percent of the children are qualified for free or reduced-cost lunch under federal guidelines. And the gap is expanding more and more every day. With such an increase as $11.33 more a month for people on fixed incomes who are not seeing an increase in their social security checks or their pensions or their public benefits, we do worry about what is affordable and whether or not getting afforded. With that said, PULP is asking the commission to scrutinize NISIC and RGE's rate case to make sure that the rates for the customers they're paying are just reasonable, affordable, and fair. Looking at the rate case drivers, two of the areas that we have concerns about, and we will be digging into deeper, is vegetation management, as well as the AMI rollout. But the vegetation management proposal, it's extremely expensive. The vegetation plan is divided into two phases cycles with roughly $70 million a year on average for years one through five, and $62 million per year on average for years six through ten. And while PULP is, you know, very grateful that vegetation management is a huge consideration, we see more and more major storms and an increase in frequency, we do have concerns about what this cost will mean to the rate payers, and again, ask that the cost be as reasonable as possible for those people who are already struggling. To the third point, the rollout of the AMI meters, we also have significant cost concerns with that element. The burden of the expensive added 1.9 million new meters in the territory is a very large rollout. We have questions that we'll be asking the company as far as the current meters, how many are already paid for, and how this will potentially be a duplicate pay on meters if there is this massive rollout. We also ask that the company and the commission consider potentially an optionally central Hudson who has an opt-in program where customers can say that they want these meters, please install it. Again, PULP is a party of this rate case, these just a few of the aspects that we wanted to raise here in public tonight. We thank the public service commission staff, as well as all the public advocates here tonight. We look forward to submitting our testimony, and thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you for this opportunity to comment on this H rate case. I'm a retired professor from the SUNY system, but I have children, and so I've taken on another job advocating for my children. Your job is to advocate for the public. People have come to list grievances, every from NISIC's demand for 9% profit to winter shut-offs for low-income customers, to their plan to build a new pipeline when state regulation and climate change tell us we must start building a pipe out of the ground and moving households to air-source pumps. It's no surprise that NISIC has failed to spend ratepayer dollars responsibly since being bought by Avogadro. NISIC is doing whatever greedy corporation does. But what would Teddy Boozvelt have to say to you, the Public Service Commission? Regulated monopoly is only viable if the regulator advocates for the public. Your job is not to approve corporate planning and squanderers ratepayer dollars and coax the planning. Further, you now have a mandate based on newly passed legislation to require utilities to ratchet down greenhouse gas emissions and build electric grids capable of accommodating scaled renewable assets. Again, this evening, NISIC suggested that more than doubling the cross-sectional area of the Duroy might not increase capacity. Again, NISIC mentioned Dominion's subscription. Our local paper, knowing not that the Daily Star is also fully subscribed, but a phone call can still get to a paper. With forty thousand horsepower of new compression on the Dominion, they could push more gas. NISIC again stated that an eight-inch or ten-inch replacement would cost almost the same as twelve-inch. NISIC's own 2016 number for a twenty-five-mile, ten-inch Duroy replacement was $49 million. Using NISIC's own number, a fifty-mile, eight-inch pipe should cost less than $100 million, saving $100 million over the proposed cost. NISIC tells us it must expand the Duroy so it won't have to run a compressor in Norwich that costs $8,000 a year. NISIC says it must build a bigger pipe because one or two interruptible customers must burn oil a few days each year. NISIC says that because it has had some customer growth mixed in with declines and flat demand, a turtling of gas to Atsico County makes sense. NISIC says it might as well expand the frac gas infrastructure because whether it puts in an eight-inch pipe or twelve-inch pipe, the price would be $200 million. NISIC is giving rate case parties and the general public that will fossil fuel run real. The PSC and public note that this proposal came out of a backroom deal between NISIC, the Atsico County IDA, and Senator Sewell. We also know that if we are to avoid climate catastrophe, this is not the way our future energy policies can be crafted. If NISIC wants a new pipe for Duroy, the PSC should allow fifty miles of eight-inch pipe because we must burn less gas tomorrow than we burn today. If NISIC wants money to clear canopy, make sure upgrades to three-phase lines and substations supporting beneficial electrification are also in the proposal. Other utilities are decapitalizing their pipelines and incentivizing heat pumps and home and below upgrades. NISIC must do the same. If we can't manage this, it will be the PSC, not NISIC, which is to blame. Thank you.
Jerry Wyon.
Thank you to the PSC for holding this hearing in Bennington. My name is Jerry Wyon, and I am an energy navigator and public health nurse who lives in Awago. I request that NISIC's rate proposals, both electric and gas, should be denied because the utility's goals do not align with climate science. I offer four points of information and recommendations. Natural gas consists primarily of methane, thus for clarity, I will call it methane for methane gas. Point number one, there are five main topics on the homepage of NISIC's website. One is smart energy. Another is convert to gas. So why does smart energy not include methane gas? Methane's full life cycle emissions and leakage, including well site processing, transportation, storage, and distribution, have recently been calculated at 4.1%. For methane gas to be an acceptable bridge fuel, this 4.1% would need to drop to 0.2 or 0.3%. If that were possible, then geothermal or air-source space heating or heat pump water heating would not so critically be needed at this time. However, for various reasons, this amount of leakage reduction is impossible to achieve. Heat pump type technology is here today. The natural gas bridge has been crossed. NISIC's job now is to educate the public and incentivize heat pumps, along with other methods of reducing our energy load. Point number two, is methane gas only a climate issue or a risk of explosion issue? No, it isn't. Methane also drives ground-level ozone, which harms public health and decreases agricultural crop yields. The social cost of methane has been calculated at $2,900 per tonne versus $8 per tonne for CO2. Point number three, why does NISIC plan to invest in smart meters for gas? Methane gas is not smart, and no meter will tell us anything else. It's time to bury the therm. Please add this money to the heat pump incentive budget. Point number four, when the utility successfully converts a neighborhood to heat pumps for space and water heating, the community's now unused gas pipeline infrastructure can be used to safely house the electric grid underground, which can be the cost-saving, defoliating-free strategic culmination of its five-year vegetation management plan. Thank you for listening.
My thanks as well to the community, to a lot of all the states in this district. I'm the moderator of the staff of Atsico, which is a political action committee and social network in Atsico. We recently passed a resolution about the opposition to one part of this rate case, the expansion of the Duroy pipeline. And I have a paper coming here, and I just did a summary.
Yes, just leave it there. All right, thank you.
I don't have any prepared remarks, but let me summarize a little bit of that. Twenty-three points is too long to read here. The bottom line is, it's really light on here, is they're suffering from a accelerating climate crisis. And that's really, that's driving this debate and having an impact on all of us. New York State has finally responded to this pretty dramatic with the Climate Leadership and Community Protection Act, which you've heard about, I think, or more about, which mandates massive reduction of fossil fuel emissions in the transition, or rapid transition to renewables. I would assume that the Public Service Commission is on board with New York State policy now, in which case the question of an expanded Duroy pipeline is very curious. It stands in pretty late, I'm predicting, the same to New York State policy. An important question is, how do we invest in the future? Where should we invest in the future? According to current policy now, given the urgency of the climate crisis, investment should go to renewables, obviously not into any expansion of fossil fuels. We're talking here about hundreds of millions of dollars. And it's already, as I said, I just pointed out, that there are significant savings here right now, if NISIC does not go through this expansion, but simply maintains minimally safely the existing Duroy pipeline until such time, as soon as possible, if it can be safely phased out. The current lack of renewable capability by the local grid is a hindrance to the regional economy. And the risk of gas infrastructure becoming a stranded asset, trapping customers into an obsolete energy technology, and leading the vulnerable to future higher prices, that all, I think, is a doubt. We certainly don't want to see, and yet that is being set up by this proposal from NISIC. Anyway, thank you. Those are my remarks. I'm also here, I've been asked to read a statement by someone else, who could be Dr. Carl Sealy, a professor of economics at Harvard College. And Judge Costello has agreed to let me do that, if it's okay on this time to read the statement. Okay, sorry. Professor Sealy writes, "The basic idea of regulated monopoly is that the monopolist tries to make profit while the regulator puts out of the public interest. NISIC has failed to make the case that an expanded pipeline would be in the public interest. Accordingly, the PSC should deny the company's request for the expansion. Public interest is best served by having a reliable energy infrastructure with the lowest possible contribution to human, urban, and climate change." In some statements, NISIC has denied that the purpose of the expanded pipe is to move more gas, while in others, admitting that it wants to be ready for a possible increase in the future. But the increase in gas use is the only rationale that makes sense. NISIC claims the incremental cost of expanding versus replacing is $4 million. This is a qualitatively small number, by order of magnitude. But given the need to reduce gas use, any extra money spent on expansion is money wasted. NISIC claims the larger pipe will enable it to stop using the large compressor station, which is a cost of about $8,500 a year. Even at the claim the incremental cost of $4 million, it would require an interest rate of negative thirteen percent over thirty years to make it worth, say, $8,500 a year. And a more plausible $100 million, the required interest rate, is negative twenty-five percent. NISIC also claims that a larger pipe can allow to move customers in interruptible service to firm service. Interruption is an inconvenience for those customers, but the interruptible contract is also a financial boon to them. They provide NISIC the flexibility to manage an appropriately sized piece of infrastructure, and NISIC compensates them with reduced rate. The amount they save with that rate is greater, giving extra expense for the backup energy. Moving them to firm contracts will simplify these customers' management, but it will also cost them money. While increasing NISIC's profits, it is not in the public interest to bring this about by collecting extra money from rate payers. Incremental costs aside, the expanded pipelines are a redness problem. Once NISIC has the ability to move more gas, it has been consented to move more gas. With the capacity replaced, any increase in the gas sales price goes directly to the fine market. Its interest has been encouraging, assisting the owners to expand their use and find new customers to make use of the potential supply. It loses any reason to encourage efficiency or transition to alternative energy sources. Finally, given the realities of climate change and the role and the humor of that problem on public interest, it is served by beneficial electrification, combined with reduced gas use. The proposed Duroy is a waste of money, but also an investment that creates a set of very harmful incentives. The regulator must step up and require monopolists to create a better plan. And that points to Professor Carl Sealy from Harvard College. Thank you very much.
Wes Ernstberger.
Thank you for providing this opportunity. I have several concerns about the NISIC rate case, but I'd like to summarize some of them. First and foremost, NISIC continues to promote and extend the use of natural gas. PSC is required to support the greenhouse gas emission reduction goals established by the Climate Leadership and Community Protection Act. These goals cannot be met if, at the same time, the PSC allows further extension of New York's gas grid. Instead, there needs to be a plan for managed phase-out of the gas grid over time. Secondly, I believe that NISIC needs to do a better job promoting energy conservation and energy efficiency. NISIC currently does very little to help its customers reduce their energy use. They could do a lot better. For example, Con Edison periodically emails a home energy report to its customers showing how their energy use compares to a hundred nearby similar homes. Studies have shown that this kind of comparative information can be powerful motivator. This same report also provides the customer with a monthly progress chart showing their energy use as compared to the previous year, and provides several energy savings that the customers can use to reduce their load. Another concern I have is that has to do with the great connection of renewable energy projects. Every community solar project that I have heard of has suffered long delays waiting for NISIC to connect their drawing to the grid. This process really needs to be streamlined. Also, there are power quality problems, I believe. The quality of the power that NISIC provides on the grid really needs to be improved. Now, as a case in point, let me relate to an incident that involved my church on Riverside Drive. Our church has solar panels. Three years ago, the solar panels, the inverters, shut down intermittently over a three-month period, and that caused electricity production from the panels to drop by about 40%. We traced the problem to a low voltage being regulated by our NISIC substation. The other example from this is our church also has an air-source heat pump system. And last January, our compressor failed and had a very big blast. And the failure occurred right at the time when the NISIC that in our neighborhood was experiencing low and fluctuating voltages during especially cold weather. Finally, it is my understanding that NISIC now is the only yard for solar that does not provide heat pump incentives. And so this needs to change and even help people to make the transition from heating their homes by burning fossil fuels to heating their homes with electricity. Thank you very much.
Colleen Blacklock.
Thank you, Your Honor and Commissioner Howard. My name is Colleen Blacklock.
My name is Colleen Blacklock, and I'm here on behalf of Concerned Citizens in O'neana. I'd like to address many concerns we have about this rate case. NICEC has failed to keep up with the tree trimming since the company was purchased by Alvin Group, and yet they collected money all these years expressly for maintenance. I have a large tree that has needed trimming for 10 years now, and a fallen, a half-fallen tree threatening to take down the line to my neighbor's house. NICEC wants to raise the electric rates by almost 23% to cover a new aggressive round-the-sky clearing of trees to make up for its past negligence. How is it that we must pay again for something that should already have been done? Why is it now necessary to clearcut all the trees in near the path of power lines, a task that will take tremendous time and resources? The current careful tree trimming policy described online is a cheaper, more expedient, and elegant solution that has been paid for and shouldn't have been carried out all along. If NICEC succeeds in getting so much money for their massive third-party campaign, how will we be guaranteed that they will use it for the intended purpose rather than pocketing the money or just passing it on to their shareholders? On the gas side, customers have already paid NICEC $32 million to upgrade 25 miles of the deroyer pipeline from Norwich to O'neana. Again, they took the money, but did not accomplish its upgrade. Now they want to embark on a 50-mile and massive 12-inch upgrade that will eventually require somewhere between $200 and $500 million to complete. Why should current gas customers foot the bill for a massive upgrade they don't need? There is very little growth, 3% expected in the next few years. Yet NICEC wants to nearly triple the amount of gas coming into Ozziko County and specifically O'neana. This will triple emissions of CO2 in future of methane. Methane is 100 times more potent as a greenhouse gas than CO2. O'neana, a climate smart community, and the state of New York with its new climate legislation are working to curb carbon emissions. How does tripling the gas to our area help the people of our county move to more renewable, efficient energy solutions? We are hurtling toward a deadline of 10 years from now, when the global temperature rise will pass a threshold no return. It is an impossible task to slow down a lot of greedy corporations from destroying the planet, but we must make an effort. As a NICEC customer, I want help getting off gas and moving toward renewable energy, and I certainly don't want to be stuck with the bill to pay for a lot more gas and a bridge to stranded assets and a doomed future. The Public Service Commission is entrusted with the role of protecting the public from unnecessary rate hikes and price gouging. Please, regulate NICEC so we can afford to move toward a future for our children and our grandchildren. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Adam Flint. I'm a NICEC customer from the town of Vestal, and I also direct clean energy programs for a small nonprofit here called the Bigger Tin Regional Sustainability Coalition Risk. We are partying to a case, and we'll be submitting more comprehensive formal comments for the record later. Over the last decade, we conducted energy education advocacy and NICEC program implementation activities, about half of which has been during the period of the reforming the Energy Division or GAF proceeding, which in part was intended to speed the adoption of renewables and energy efficiency by incentivizing utilities to facilitate those things. The focus of my remarks tonight will be on our frustrated attempts to develop global community shared solar projects. As you will hear, far from facilitating renewables deployment, and we've heard of this a few times already tonight, I'm sure it will be the last. NICEC has been among the New York's five utilities at best a reluctant partner, and at worst a barrier of business and other aspects of the state's now even more ambitious energy and climate goals. One of the roles that my organization plays is as an energy educator to increase energy literacy so that citizens can participate more actively, and I want to thank Commissioner Howard for your remarks, very outset, because I think it is very important, that in this world of climate change and complete transformation in our energy system, that citizens have the knowledge and are equipped to participate. And I also want to thank Judge Costello and anyone else that made these hearings happen as early as they did before the end of the discovery period of the case. So in 2015, Governor Andrew Cuomo launched New York's Community Shared Solar Program, promising solar access, quote, "regardless of income or zip code," unquote. Another hat that I wear is the Director of the Community Shared Renewables Working Group, which we formed for the Energy Democracy Alliance that year to support community solar project development by rather non-traditional developers, community groups, nonprofits, and even municipalities in some cases across the state, particularly for the benefit of those who were in the brunt of our dirty energy system, working class communities and communities of color. The Energy Democracy Alliance tagline is "Baking Red for Deal," which means renewable, equitable, accountable, and local. And having local benefit along with all the rest is something that concerns us a great deal, along with the equity piece. So in a few months, we built the knowledge base and finance connections to get started. The first call we got was from the mayor of Baybridge in Shenango County, who had met with a couple that owned parcel of land they thought would be ideal to create a solar farm to benefit the residents of the village, which has more than a share of the property. Our engineer indicated that the physical characteristics of the property was ideal in the three-phase surface of the boundary line without the other winter. That is, and so we began the interconnection process with NICEC. As more well-resourced developers will tell you, the interconnection process, not just in this territory, but in all of them, is time-consuming and expensive and sometimes fatal for projects. Our case was no exception. When the engineering report came back from the Caesar study, it was clear that the cost necessary to upgrade the substation to connect our project would break the financial. And this is a common refrain for many projects in rural parts of the state where infrastructure really isn't sufficient to connect anything very big. One thing many in the audience might not know is that solar equipment developers must pay for any necessary upgrades of utility infrastructure in order to connect our projects to the grid. That cost must be, of course, passed on to the customers, or the owners or both of those systems, all of whom are already paying rates for the upkeep of the grid. This whole dynamic really makes it very, very tough for in-state smaller developers of all stripes to make a going of developing distributed renewable projects. It's really, it requires very deep pockets. The state regulatory process, as well as interconnection, requires very deep pockets and the ability to hang on for months or years at a time that most of us cannot afford. The cost of interconnection imposed by NICEC and the other utilities, along with the regulatory train rack known as feeder, value-distributed energy resources, which we now affectionately refer to as VADER, as in DARF, has been a personal reason why New York's community shared solar market remains weak. In my written testimony, I will feed back the statistics that are available on Open New York. I'll just name one here. Between 17 and 18, the number of applications for community shared solar projects fell 83%, and the completion rate went between 16 and 18, which is most of the period of program's existence, is less than 10% completion. NICEC shortcomings in facilitating clean energy deployment are not limited to solar. Of New York's five utilities, NICEC alone lacks any heat pump incentive program, which they in fact committed to providing at the end of last year for this year. Their residential energy efficiency programs are anemic at best. Given that the energy efficiency order was to have come out in September, and the understanding will come out at some point this fall, and that REV contemplates standing over a lot of the implementation responsibilities to the utilities, this is very troublesome, to say the least. So we're asking two things in this case. We're asking DPS staff to investigate the rate of investment or lack thereof in staffing and grid upgrades. As we remain unconvinced that the rate pair funds since the EBITDROL acquisition of Energy East in 2008, that use has been responsible in importance to the public's interest, particularly given the conclusions of their 2012 audit. Finally, our taxpayer dollars, taxpayer, rate payer dollars should not be allocated towards the, shouldn't be allocated towards the dual goals of clean energy deployment and affordability, and less than shareable dividends in what, as many have already said, will shortly become a stranded asset, the frac assets. Thank you.
Hi. Good evening. Hello. Thank you for listening. Thank you for giving us this chance. I don't have anything prepared. You're winging it. I do have a slice of life. I believe this truth are thousands of people in that state of New York. I have a neighbor, Mr. Green, who has property in one territory that belongs to NICEC, and the other side of the road, his property belongs to the Delaware County, one co-op's territory. And I believe this speaks to the integrity of NICEC as a corporation. The side that belongs to the co-op, Mr. Green never loses power, but on the side run by NICEC, he loses power all the time. 10 years ago, this was not such a problem. 10 years ago, there were a crew of 12 maintenance people in our area that kept the corridors clear, and no one has been on my property in those entire 10 years to do any maintenance whatsoever. We've been paying for maintenance all along, but nothing's been happening. The maintenance workers who left or retired have not been replaced. We've gone from 12 to 2. And the unreliable situation is preventing a lot of people, in the people, from switching to electricity, which is, for many of us, is the only choice. We have gas on one hand or electricity on the other. And if we would like to switch to electricity, we know that we can't rely on it during times of year, reserves and floods, so that's preventing a lot of people who would like very much to switch to renewable energy, to not be able to do so if they can't trust NICEC to keep power on long enough. Last week alone, I lost power twice during the meeting. The NICEC is no longer supplying even enough energy to run corded telephones during power outages, so we're left without any way of contacting anyone in emergencies. My area has some cell service, so that's out. It has been a rate increase at this point, when the service has dropped so tremendously, it seems almost ridiculous. And again, we should be moving toward clean energy if we hope to survive. So, thank you. Thank you for listening.
Now, what I'll do, just so that we have the next speaker ready, I'm going to call out the person who will be up next, and that's Arthur Rorick.
Thank you for listening. I have a very personal concern. I own a blueberry farm up in Gaslight, and have, the blueberries are within 50 feet of the pipeline across my property, and my house is on the other side of the 50-foot barrier. I cannot imagine either losing my house or losing my blueberry farm when NICEC comes along and puts in what I consider an unnecessary and extremely awful increased pipeline. When they're building it, they cannot simply cut off the gas while they replace it. So that means that they're going to have to put in a whole new car, interrupting streams, interrupting businesses, interrupting people's lives. I have one other complaint, which is, I was appalled that NICEC sent, there are nice-looking representatives who couldn't answer a single question that we asked. But they actually, the Public Service Commission, to please represent us and let, ask the corporation to answer. I mean, if they're holding a hearing and they're coming to explain their position, are they not bound to be prepared to hear what here are questions? It just seems awful to me. Thank you.
Arthur Rorick, and the next person will be Linda Greer. All right. I'm sorry if I mispronounced your name, just correct me if I'm wrong.
My name is Arthur Rorick. He owns New York. I have three comments that were mailed in, and I have copies of them with me.
You can leave them right there, and we will ensure they're collected and put into the record.
So, as management owner of EBITDROL and now head of grid, took over NICEC, RTV, Central Lake Power, and other subsidies throughout New York, we picked out a name. The new utility owner has outsourced many jobs in the project, including vegetation management, distribution of transmission line upgrades and replacements, system and control engineering, both electric and gas, gas infrastructure and other areas of the company. EBITDROL makes millions of dollars annually by allowing our local energy system to be strapped to natural gas, and impact vice-horns, many fines, and continuing to reduce workforce and detriment in service. NICEC's 2019 rate case complains to rebuild and expand deroyer pipeline installed in Community Street. The 2016 rate case submitted by NICEC also included a ability to drive a pipeline from Norris to O'neana. That work hasn't started, and in the next 3 years, increased rate to both electric and gas. Natural gas is a major driver for mobile power, or entravens the public health, especially since it's linked to fracking. NICEC's fiber cattle lands are also headed inconsistent on scope, project timing, cost. 60% utilization is not dictated for gas supply issue. Utility companies should be moving away from fossil fuels like natural gas to support greener, more efficient technologies such as air source, ground source, heat pumps. So, with that in store, additionally, other utilities are requested to pursue non-pipe alternatives, but NICEC has stated they will not pursue in a single county. This means we change and become the main focus of our utilities today to reduce the demand of gas. Bottom line is that customers are being worked in continually, continually increases in electric, gas, and freight costs from these large, more-known utilities. The economic benefits of gas are short-sighted, lack real substance, since there's over 60 years of gas in a single county. The gas here is economically viable after the main flat. Collateral transparency and full disclosure by NICEC have allowed bad court deals, like with our local IDA, to work against the customers and continue to align more known companies to be dealing with profits while our energy supply assistance are dated and cannot support the real reforms needed to help reduce greenhouse gas emissions. While the public needs to store well-regulated, transparent, start-new While the public needs to store well-regulated, transparent, start using the internal profits to get into town, instead of gouging customers to decrease profits, NISAC should focus on moving us into the next century with affordable, handy, dual-handed, helpful, and making... thank you.
(applause) Linda Bree, Wright.
I'm Linda Wright.
Sorry. Next up will be Robert Franklin.
I've had a career in biochemical research and am a co-author on 33 peer-reviewed scientific publications. As you can see from the words on my shirt, it's science we trust. This is my hard copy of this. I'm from Sullivan County, most of which is served by NISAC Electric and Gas. In 2017, our population count was 75,000 in an area of 1,000 square miles. That averages 75 people per square mile. Sullivan County is one of the poorest counties in New York State, with 14% of residents living at or below the poverty line. Proposed rate increase of about $10 per month is exorbitant, and Sullivan County government has written to the Public Service Commission about this and 10 other topics of concern. The fixed charge was decreased in the most recent Central Hudson gas and electric case. So a reduction ruling should be granted to NISAC, to NISAC customers as well by the PSC. Closing the Liberty, New York walk-in office cannot be exchanged for online interactions with residents. Face-to-face interactions are important in Sullivan County. Why? 18% have no computer. 24% of people have no broadband access, and many don't have cellular phone service. Lack of access to technologies especially negatively affects elderly and low-income residents. The proposed fee for opting out of AMI is about $20 a month. It's exorbitant and punitive. NISAC will ultimately save money with AMI, so customers should not be paying for this capital improvement. People without internet access and those most in need of energy cost-cutting programs will not be treated fairly with NISAC's plans. Sullivan County low-income residents with genuine financial hardships now participate in the Low Income Rehearsance Forgiveness Program. The program's use rate should be improved by NISAC rather than scrap that program. NISAC will save money through planned staff reduction and energy management. Thus, again, the point is that the fixed rate increase and the fee for opting out of AMI are unnecessary. NISAC must have been saving money while it was deferring years' worth of maintenance and line upgrades in Sullivan County. Economic development has been hindered by slow and exorbitant costs to businesses. Lack of appreciation by NISAC for community distributed generation of environmentally beneficial electricity has compromised New York's ability to grow innovative supplies in truly clean ways and which help meet Red Goals, Community Smart Goals, and goals to help our shared earth stay below a catastrophic 2 degrees centigrade rise of global temperature, mostly caused by humans burning of fossil fuel for heating and transportation. The owners of NISAC Corporation are not from New York State. They are from a foreign country. They do not act in the interest of rate payers. But our New York State Public Service Commission can restrain business decisions that are detrimental to customers and our earth's environment. To our PSC, I say, keep these three aspects in mind as you consider NISAC's proposal. One, make no, and I mean no, investments in gas infrastructure. Two, subsidize environmentally beneficial electrification of transportation, appliances, and heating systems. Three, implement much renewable energy generation, as per Dr. Mark C. Jacobson and others. I'm submitting three references for how to power New York State without producing harmful heat-trapping greenhouse gas emissions. Their references are from 2013 and 18, and from authors in seven different countries. These support Jacobson's 2013 plan for New York State to be powered entirely by electricity generated from renewable sources of water, wind, and solar. Note that the conversion would reduce New York State's end-use power demand by 37% and stabilize energy prices since fuel costs would be zero. It would create more jobs than lost because nearly all New York State energy would now be produced in-state. New York State air pollution mortality costs would decline, repay the 271 gigawatts installed power needed within 17 years. All three publications I submit conclude the principal barriers to 100% renewable electricity are neither technological nor economic, but instead are primarily political, institutional, and cultural. Thank you.
(applause) Arthur. And after, what is your... that will be Dan Levenson?
Uh, I'm announcing that we have to learn about... uh, many people still may be worried at that discussed. No one is fine. So I'm... literally, I'll talk about the human cost in my town. Yeah, there are a lot of people, retirees, older people that cannot afford rate increases. They don't want to see one. They would like to see decrease. This expansion will benefit nobody in the town I represent. It will represent... it will help nobody in the entire township who learned about it. They question sometimes quite colorfully why it's necessary that they pay for an expansion of a pipeline system that is not going to benefit them in any way, shape, or form. And why a company with a company that is owned by a foreign entity is allowed to impact us. Again, they say much more colorfully than I am right now. My response to this is, I'm really angry at this very moment. Fossil fuel industry has always socialized cost and privatized profit. And socialism is not very popular. Calls a lot of services these days. It always seems to be socialism is very popular when it comes to the fossil fuel industry. They're more than happy that everybody helped them make profit, but they're not happy to share it. There are reasons they've given for needing this money, and I mean this, they, as I said in my former comments, there was no, and I assume no provision for building out the solar or wind power. The rural community, which I live in, that could be very beneficial to them. There's farms failing that would love to have a solar installation of a product, would let them stay in or honor a purely farm. Windmills are problematic in some areas, but there's many people in the area I represent who would pursue wind power. Again, this will contribute money to small rural communities. I... I'm a co-op. I don't have to deal necessarily with NISAC, but they purchase their property, much of the property from NISAC. So even co-ops that are usually, if I did these discussions, I go pay them, and that's not addressed by this meeting. Like I said earlier, they give a very polished, smooth presentation, but it never takes into account the cost on average, on average person, especially in a rural, rural economy, or a non-justice community. It's never taken into consideration. I don't anticipate it ever will. I... so I'm definitely against the people who ran the rail, uh, sleeping with this thought. Please forgive me, it's kind of colorful, uh, when it comes to one of my constituents. At my town board meeting the other night, I wanted to inform them of this, a lot of people who are here. When the old timer said, "NISAC's screwed me over all my life." And expected NISAC to say, "NISAC's screwing everybody, goddammit." Thank you.
(laughter) (applause) Dan Levenson. And Nancy Mollin.
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to welcome everybody to the city council chambers meeting, to the city council meeting. And it's always great to see a crowd in here. I also just want to make a comment on process. I feel like folks from NISAC came here, feeling prepared to answer questions. They had 20 minutes of Q and A, and it was really disappointing that they really weren't prepared to answer some, you know, basic question about proportion of different priorities that they have, proportion of money that's going to come from the rate increases going to these, to these different aspects of their, I guess, their three priority areas. But I don't have a whole lot to say, but one thing that I would like to mention is that it just seems that we're looking at NISAC's priorities here. They have presented us with a free area that they want to spend money. And listening to members of the public who came here this week tonight, it seems that their priorities are out of step with the public's priorities. And looking at the agenda coming out of Albany, it really looks like their priorities, NISAC's priorities, are out of step with New York State's priorities. And so I would just urge the Public Service Commission to really take a little bit of soul searching and take a look at what NISAC is really proposing to do in the next five to 10 years, and if that really matches up with what the public wants, and if that really matches up with where New York State is headed.
(applause) Paul Lysel, for Nancy Mollin. Andrea Lister.
Nancy Mollin. I am a resident of the City of Miami, and I'm a member of NISAC. I work in the services desk, physician assistant in Onzevo County. And as a... I do request that NISAC's application for rate increase for the expansion of the Royer gas pipeline and the electric rate increase request be denied. I feel that giving a rate increase for the electric request is basically rewarding bad behavior. So the Stark and New York State Department of Public Service is commissioned, and I thank you, to ensure safe public services while protecting the natural environment and stimulating markets for clean renewable energy, resources, and service innovations. NISAC's application to expand the Royer pipeline is in direct opposition to this mission. For the phrase that we build it, it will come, an expanded pipeline capable of tripling the delivery of natural gas to Oneyanta is surely designed to promote increased fossil fuel use, no matter what they say. On its website, NISAC will not only strongly encourage us today for customers to convert to natural gas. This servant, if this pipeline expansion is approved, consumption of natural gas will increase in both residential and commercial venues in Oneyanta and its surrounding areas. As a result, clean renewable energy projects will be stifled. And from what I hear here, it sounds like they've already been stifled in terms of the solar forms. This is a direct conflict with the policy of the New York State Climate Leadership and Community Protection Act, which seeks to reduce statewide greenhouse gas emissions by 85% by 2000... by 2050. So much time, effort, and monies have already been pledged towards this goal. An expanded 50-mile, 12-inch diameter Royer pipeline has no place in New York's energy future. If allowed to be built, it will quickly become obsolete, but still on the rate payer's shoulders. Despite the disapproval of Oneyanta's citizen, the local IDA with NISAC continues to push mass development fueled by natural gas. Citizen response to fossil fuel project has remained overwhelmingly negative, as demonstrated in multiple open meetings. It is fact that the climate crisis is in a crisis due to human causes, due to fossil fuels. It is imperative that we reduce fossil fuel consumption. Should this pipeline application be approved, NISAC will exploit customers like myself to finance a project which not only expands, but encourages increased use of fossil fuel over renewables. Rate payers will be forced to pay for a project which they rightly reject because it violates New York State energy policy and will cause permanent harm to our communities and environment. The climate crisis is now. New York leaders and citizens have formulated a framework for a more hopeful and brighter future. I ask that you, joining this vision, deny this application. I ask that you advocate for the rate payers to, as your mission states, secure state public services, which include protecting the natural environment and stimulating markets for clean renewable energy. Thank you.
(applause) Andrea Lister. To be followed by Teresa Manchester.
I'd like to thank the Public Service Commission for allowing me to speak. I am a resident of Oregon, New York, which is at the end of the D-Rider pipeline. NISAC's 2015 rate case allowed the utility to collect money to replace the 25 miles of the D-Rider pipeline from Norwich to Oneyanta with 10-inch pipe. In three years, NISAC has collected about $32 million with this project. But NISAC now says it does not intend to pursue the expansion. I have to wonder where the money is gone, and if it's still there, what could it be used for? NISAC transcripts provided for the rate case show only 3% demand growth for three years from Oneyanta. Overall, central New York has a high power rate and a declining population. It makes no sense for NISAC to triple gas supply and charge a heading rate increase. Other options, like non-pipeline alternatives such as renewables, would make much more sense. New York State has passed a legislation to expand renewable deployment and cut greenhouse gas emissions. The legislation makes NISAC's expansion, expanded pipeline plan, obsolete even before it is built. Sometimes I wonder, however, if NISAC... if New York State only has this plan for certain areas. I seem to notice there are some places where a pipeline is pushed, the increase in natural gas infrastructure is encouraged, and in other areas, none so much. So sometimes I feel like we here who live in, near the Banton area in Onzevo County, absolutely have no voice with regard to what we want for our environment and for our communities. Instead of 70 years' worth of additional pipe, NISAC needs to upgrade its basery power lines and substations to accommodate wind and solar power. As the D-Rider needs replacing for a 10-inch pipe from Sheds, New York, to Norwich, and an 8-inch pipe from Norwich to Oneyanta, this will save $100 million, which can then be spent on renewable incentives. The electric-based energy infrastructure of our future will take much more planning than NISAC has done, and unfortunately, a lot of oversight on our part. Thank you very much.
And then we'll have George from Holmesy.
Okay, well, first of all, I'd like to urge anyone who has spoken here tonight to share their comments in a form on a letter to the editor, or in my pet piece, or social media, or local talk shows, or whatever, because there's been a lot of good information that the public needs to know. The public right now is very, not very well informed on this. Hardly any people, anybody knows what's going on right now. And since you're... also, since you're convinced of Governor Cuomo, because he needs to know where we stand on this, and that we're not going to let him get away with this. Also, everybody, many people do everything they like. I'm saying I'm not that polite of a thing, but it's amazing with us tonight. But it's my understanding, and really, I had to do a lot of searching on the internet to hit the names of members of the Public Service Commission. It's my understanding that the chair is Mr. John Rhodes. Is that correct? There's also, there's also Ms. Berman, Diane Berman, Mr. Sayer.
He's not over.
He's not over. And Mr. Alessi.
That's correct.
Where are they tonight?
I do not know.
From my, my research, the Valde de Pia shows they make $127,000 a year. Do they need a raise to get here? I don't think... I make about 20% of that, and I'm here, so I... I'm personally disappointed. Um, so I, I, I'm personally disappointed that they're not here to hear what all of these people who care so much about the climate and about, and about their fellow citizens, I'm, I'm sorry, they're not here to, to hear what people have to say. I don't think that their good comments are quite going to come through like that. So I'm going to skip a lot of what I have to say, because I already can help a lot from. But, um, so I'll just start by saying that I'm going to cite three sources to which the Public Service Commission should defer in making this decision. A little question here, I'm sorry. First of all, in 2018, the leading international body of climate change researchers, the United Nations Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change, released a report on the impacts of global warming and what it would take to cap the worst annual rise in temperature at 1.5 degrees Celsius or 2.7 degrees Fahrenheit, the necessary cap to prevent irreversible damage to our planet. The report in fact states that the basic facts of climate crisis are ground, and that the vast majority of fossil fuel reserves need to stay in the ground. And that means, that means, uh, not in pipelines in the ground, but just in the ground. Secondly, um, the second story sadly beside is Bill McKibben, who's an acclaimed environmentalist, author, and journalist, who has written extensively on the impact of global warming. He is the leader of an anti-carbon campaign, 350.org, whose website plainly states, "Human beings are causing climate change, largely by burning fossil fuels." Even in this dire situation, McKibben says we can survive. How? Keep fossil fuels in the ground. And quickly transition to 100% renewable energy. The science says it's still possible to stay under 1, 1.5 Celsius, but we need to halve emissions by 2030 and increase the share of solar and hydro energy dramatically in, in that time. That's according to Bill McKibben. And thirdly, and close to home, as many people have cited, the New York, New York State has passed a Climate Leadership and Community Protection Act, which calls for 70% of this electricity to come from renewable sources by 2030, and 100% of this electricity to come from carbon-free sources by 2040. Nothing in the NICEX, uh, uh, derouter proposal supports any of the actions recommended to slow climate change. On the contrary, it promotes the use of fossil fuels so deeply to this planet. With the derouter proposal, NICEX, uh, has chosen to stand on the wrong side of history, the wrong side of humanity. Tonight, I, along with the majority of people here, call upon you, John Rhodes, in absentia, Diane Berman, in absentia, and, and James Allessi, in absentia, to be on the right side of history. We call upon you to deny the application by NICEX, uh, to expand this Droider Pipeline. Thank you.
George Holmsey is next, to be followed by Christina Kramer.
Good evening. My name is George Holmsey, and I rent an apartment, I have rented an apartment for about six years, right here in downtown Brooklyn, New York. And, um, I bring that up because what I want NICEX to do is make it easier for renters, especially me, to become part of the solution. And we've heard it over and over again, climate change is the most dire threat facing humanity, but it's often very difficult for renters to access renewable power or to engage in energy conservation. So I'm asking that NICEX make it easier to join community solar projects, speed the connection of such projects, and lower the fixed energy costs so that renters can see the fiscal advantages of energy conservation. Since I don't own my apartment or own a house, and I can't put solar panels on the roof of my building, so I found out about a community solar project, a new field that I could join. Excellent, I could have my solar power as a rental. I was very happy, until I started to learn that hurdles that were moving away. First, it was the pay per work. Could I just switch to a community solar project? No. I had to designate the solar company as, the community solar company as authorized business partner, as if, as if I had a business. Um, this required reviewing and signing a dot legal document. Um, I should not have had to consult my attorney in order to switch to solar power. Then I had to cancel budget billing. And then many customers would also have had to consolidate NICEX Energy Service Company building. It was a long process of paperwork that was intimidating even to me, and I'm a strong environmental advocate. How could we expect lots of people to join community solar projects with such hurdles in place? Second, it took five months for NICEX to complete the project's interconnection to the grid. As someone who had signed up, I received an email on November 2nd that the solar farm was complete, but it was not until March that I complained that I was finally using solar power, because it took so long for NICEX to test and interconnect the system. It should not be this long or this hard for renters to join community solar projects or for those projects to come online. Finally, NICEX building practices seem to be anti-conservation. I made $15.11 as a basic service charge, two or three times as much as was paid by customers in other states. It's, it's really hard for me to make my bill go down when I have, when I have such a, a, a high basic service charge, stuck on it no matter how much I use. Um, my basic service charge in my one-bedroom apartment is the same as someone who owns a 10,000-square-foot mansion. The high basic service charge imposed by NICEX inhibits the ability of renters such as me to see some of the financial benefits of conservation. So as part of this rate case, I would ask the Public Service Commission to make sure that NICEX be required to invest in a technical personnel to make solar and wind power testing into connections faster, much faster. That NICEX should be required to reduce the paperwork needed to switch to renewable power projects so that consumers such as me could find it much, much easier to join these projects and less intimidating. And finally, they should lower the cost of fixed charges and increase the ability of renters to reap the fiscal benefits of conservation. Thank you very much for your time.
Christina Kramer, to be followed by Lisa Marshall.
Well, my name is Christina Kramer. I'm a research and specialty project coordinator at the Brooklyn Executive Office. On behalf of Brooklyn Executive, Jason Parker, thank you for speaking input from the public here in Brooklyn County. County Executive Parker could not be here tonight, but he sent the following that I issued today. As Brooklyn Executive, I represent nearly 200,000 residents, individuals, families, seniors, and children. I represent the not-for-profit organizations and businesses, large and small. I represent a government with a dozen buildings and thousands of employees. We all require the utilities provided only by NICEX. In 2018, Brooklyn County Office created over 600 calls related to utility payments issues. Seniors being up to 24% of the Brooklyn County population. Many of our seniors are on fixed incomes and struggling to stay in their homes. Although benefits from this heat will help lower income over adults, many people still fall short on having the money to pay their utility bills. Many people have to choose between heat and other necessities such as food and medication rates increase. During the heat season 2018, Brooklyn County Department of Social Services provided more than 21,000 in benefits for heating expenses. That is over 10% of the population of the county's struggle with regular or emergency heating or repairs. Over 13,000 firms do business in Brooklyn County. Increasing their utility rates negatively impacts our regional economy and the jobs of tens of thousands of residents. A low estimation of annual county electric costs is $500,000. A 20% increase of that is an additional $100,000, and that's not back on gas heating costs. This is a significant expense that the county will be required to find from taxpayer dollars. We may have to cut programs, fire employees, or raise taxes to make those payments. Residents could be doubly impacted by both NICEX's increased rates and potentially increased taxes. An increase in, as proposed by NICEX, is an unfair burden on residents and businesses in Brooklyn. I received an enormous number of messages from residents who are alarmed and scared that their utility bills could go up. They cannot afford it. As the elected representative of all our residents, I strongly urge the commission to consider the short and long-term impacts these rate increases on all areas of life in Brooklyn. Thank you.
Lisa Marshall, and then Becca Forsythe, who will be next.
Good evening. My name is Lisa Marshall. I live in Forsyth, New York, which is in Sherman County. Um, I'm a volunteer with the Climate Organization Letters Out Front, and former staff member of that organization, and currently work for Heat Smart Tompkins. Although here, I represent just myself and Letters Out Front. Um, my husband is a retired Navy officer, and he settled in this beautiful part of New York after his Navy career, raised our three children here. Um, I just want to say in a personal note that our children all suffer from anxiety about their whole future goals because of climate change and making life decisions based on that reality. Um, so my husband and I have done everything we can to provide for our children and a livable future for them, as well as a, a healthy present. Um, we installed solar panels on our house, and some help from New York State, but where was NICEX? We have purchased a hybrid, electric hybrid plug-in car. I drove to Ithaca to deliver a rate case here yesterday, paid to park in a garage because I knew there was an electric charging station, but it was full. Um, again, New York State's been working on putting out some charging stations, but where's NICEX? Um, we actually don't have enough solar panels for our electric use now that we have the car, and we'd love to pay into community solar, but we can't do that either. Um, and so, um, in order to get the rest of our electricity from renewable sources, we can't do that, and NICEX, we have to be at the mercy of the predatory ESCOs here in New York State, and that's, I consider that unacceptable. So in my job for Heat Smart, what I'm trying to do is to help people to, um, find out how they can convert their home heating, only water heating, to beneficial electrification. And NICEX said here tonight they want to promote beneficial electrification, but if they're going to raise the electricity rates, that's just laughable, because of course, when I speak to people, everybody is interested. I haven't spoken to a single person from any political party, any background, who doesn't want to convert their home heating to either brown source or air source heat. And first thing they say is they can't figure out how to afford it. So in my job with Heat Smart, I can show them that if we can help them to figure out the upfront payment, that over time, it will save them money. And that's the most convincing argument I have. To rate, raise the electricity rates, that argument goes away. Uh, same thing for electric cars, et cetera. This is just absolutely complete opposite of what we need to do if we are going to remain an industrialized society and, um, also meet the climate emergency that's facing us right now. Um, I just want to say also that I'm from Sherman County, which is one of the poorest, oldest, sickest counties in New York State. Um, no hearings from the New York government ever come to Elmira, which is the only, one of only two cities in the country that's, is still in recession. We have incredible poverty. Just a year ago, my Facebook feed reminds me, we were underwater from climate-related storms. Elmira's built on a flood plain. Our children are, one in four, at least of our children are food insecure. Um, and our families are struggling to pay their, their NICEX bills. And I mean, as I said, here is already said, difficult choices month to month. Um, so, you know, um, I don't have much more to say, other than that the Public Service Commission has really stepped up this year in ways we've never seen before, um, to try to hold the utilities to account. As we all know, NICEX has been most of the calcy trend and difficulty of utility to make all the transitions we need to make in New York State. And so, um, the Public Service Commission and its government has given New York need to really stand up to utilities and make it very clear, any utility operating in New York State will no longer get away with this kind of behavior. They're going to get kicked right out, so, okay.
Becca Forsythe is next, to be followed by, I don't know, Peter Huddberg. I'm not sure if I really have anything to read.
Goodness, good to be here.
I'm just going to announce that I know of her.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you today. I have been a paying customer from NICEX in Elmira, New York, for over 30 years. I am also one of the 9.9 million poor and low-income residents that live here in New York State. Elmira has recently been cited, as Lisa just pointed out, and the U.S. state today is the one of only two cities in the country that are still in recession. 96% of our housing status was built before 1980, and 78% of it was built before 1950, making us a hotspot for both lead poisoning and energy inefficiency. Our median household income doesn't go over $30,000 a year. We hand forward to shoulder another rate hike tied to our difficulty for energy. I have also been the unfortunate recipient of one of the seven million shut-off promises that NICEX has issued since they've been in business. I am here as a representative of the Poor People's Campaign, a national call for moral revival. I ask that we work together to fight poverty and not the poor. New Yorkers are promised a degree of energy justice and a series of laws that grant energy services to all residential customers without unreasonable qualifications or lengthy delays, which is necessary for the preservation of the health and wealth, general welfare as it pertains to the public interest. Extracting another rate hike from our, for our access to energy seems unreasonable and places large barriers in terms of health and general welfare for our people. Power companies in New York are required to offer deferred payment agreements after you get a shut-off. But when I called to ask for one, I told the fact that I once defaulted, I am no longer eligible for that privilege. So I am to be judged based on my performance in my twenties, when my kids were little, and I had to choose Christmas presents and NICEX. Heat in my home are Thanksgiving dinner for my family, and now I'm breaking one. When are we going to stop fighting the poor? One thing that needs to be examined is the disproportionate impact fixed fees have on the impoverished. This is just like another luxury tax that we can't afford, but it is intimately linked with a necessity that we can't live without. NICEX could invest in income-based programs that help the poor and low-income folks like myself to achieve energy efficiency in our homes. They could stop investing in the gas and fracking infrastructure that is driving this ecological devastation and causing damage to the environment and the economy. They could stop destroying the land and exploiting the poor. They could stop pushing the fols so that there is any such thing as a safe pipeline. They can stop our dependence on fossil fuels that are accelerating this climate change. Those are only some of the prices that we cannot afford today. It is for these and many other reasons that I ask the Public Service Commission to send out a request for rate cutting. If NICEX wants more of our money, I ask them, what have we done for us lately? Taking into consideration that poor and low-income make up 51% of New York State. Also consider the damage being done to Mother Earth, our only home. Please take into account people over profits. Thank you for your time.